Yep. And no one wants to do all of it by themselves.
I have to remember everybody's name. I have the tough job.
Very good to go town.
Okay, I'm just waiting till it hits five. Okay, welcome to the January twenty-third, twenty-twenty-four Valley County Planning and Zoning Commission Work Session. We'll call this meeting to order at 5:00 PM. Could we please have roll call?
Commissioner Caldwell.
President.
Roberts.
Here.
Freeman.
Here.
Potter.
Here.
Swain.
Here.
All commissioners are in attendance.
Okay, we'll move forward with our first business item, which is the election of officers.
Will you make motions?
Yes, sir.
I would like to make a motion that we retain Katelyn's role for new year.
There's a motion in a second to retain myself as chairman. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Moving forward with vice chairman. Okay, there's a motion in a second for Ken Roberts to continue as vice chair. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. And we need to have a secretary as well, which is usually staff, as in Cindy. But entertain a motion.
Motion that staff continues to be.
Cindy. Cindy.
Cindy, or continues to be secretary.
Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Bearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Officers are set for twenty-twenty-four. Moving forward with the development agreement policy, I'll turn this over to Cindy.
Okay, historically, um, we've, we did capital contribution agreements with like Tamarack. We did a development agreement with Jug Mountain. There were different development agreements with like Carefree Road Development Agreements and things like that. At one point in the past, we started doing road development agreements based upon a capital contribution agreement, which they decided not to do anymore, probably around two thousand nine, two thousand ten. They did update their capital contribution numbers, but we have been working through what is actually legal, what's not legal, what's acceptable. You know, it's not just roads that we want to mitigate. Or, you know, address different impacts. There, there could be other things in the future. So we want to call them development agreements. So we put together, put together a policy. And we sent this out to you. This has been presented to the Board of County Commissioners, and they did want to get the opinion of the Planning and Zoning Commission on what they think of this development agreement policy. This incorporates Idaho Code, Local Land use Planning Act, mostly sixty-seven, sixty-five, twelve. Since we don't have different zones, so sixty-five, sixty-seven, eleven, A, you know, that's a rezone. So we're using twelve to address the actual impacts mitigated. Our Valley County Code has different sections in it. In nine-nine-nine, it allows for development agreements. Nine-five-three-E allows for bonds and fees. And then the general powers, police powers and authority to do contracts is in the Idaho Code thirty-one, six-oh-one, and six-oh-four. So did everybody have a chance to read through this?
Mm-hmm. When did you send it out?
Oh.
Oh, it was months ago. Maybe October?
No, it was after that. We just sent a fresh copy out two weeks ago.
Wasn't it when we sent the packets out, right after we sent the packets?
I put together separately and sent it out. I'm gonna say last Thursday or Friday.
Just last Thursday?
Yes, but you have sent it out once before.
Yeah.
But this, that's what they have the hard copy of, we just sent out.
Oh. Yeah, we, we had previously sent it. Okay, so you sent it the fourteenth of December first? Yes, okay. And then it was sent with the packet on Friday.
One other question, Cindy, in our list that you gave Idaho statute of our duties, it talks about under seeing school facilities, but I don't recall ever see that in our packets that we get a letter from the schools addressing the impact of certain programs from the school.
We give them notice, depending upon which school district they're in. But I can't compel them to respond.
So the school is notified.
Yes, the school is notified.
The district is notified every time, and they have the, the ability to respond.
Yes.
And provide information to us on how this development would impact their schools. But to my knowledge, in the two years, Scott, maybe in the ten years that you've been on, has a school district ever responded?
They have.
They did once to West Rock. That was a negotiation with the Board of County Commissioners to mitigate the, the impacts. And it was included in the capital contribution agreement for West Rock. We do put on our agency notice that if you don't respond, we assume that there's no negative impacts for you.
Was Jug Mountain another example of where the schools? I can't remember. I thought maybe Black Hawk and Jug Mountain.
No, no, not Black Hawk at all. Jug Mountain, the discussion there, I don't think you were on there then.
On the first, first part of it.
The conversation with Jug Mountain was they wanted the money for the schools. And since we have such a high second home rate, taxes generated more than compensate for the cost. That was in McCall, because McCall's
So their.
funding is different than Cascade.
Yeah, there's, so the school districts are allowed an emergency levy in addition to the M and O levies and tour levies. Emergency levy is based on a formula of number of students that show up at the beginning of the year versus the previous year. And it's automatically granted as a separate levy. But the discussions we had with West Rock centered around other factors that are not counted. I'd have to dig to find the agreement.
Oh, I've got it. It's handy. I can get you a copy of it.
But there, there are impacts that generally, that can lie outside of a normal ADA, average daily attendance increase. Maybe it's bus routes that come and play. Maybe it's sites for a school. I see that happening quite a bit down in the boroughs of Alabama. Where developments will set aside for a school site.
If there's one large development, it's obvious it's going to be an impact to the schools. We don't necessarily, as a board, need to address that. It's taken care of in other ways.
Well, the maintenance and operation levy of it is taken care of through the emergency levies. It's built into the budget. But if there's other impacts, like a location for a school, if you have a large development, you can either set aside a site is kind of one of the traditional things that happens.
If they don't have to build a school, they don't have to do any.
Generally not, but there can be a monetary fee that's paid, and I think that's what we do with West Rock. For, I don't know, for building impact or other programs.
But unless the school district actually responds to this, we can't, we can't assume any we're not, we can't assume any impacts unless they actually respond to us. Because otherwise, that would be essentially a assumption of someone else's perspective.
But you'd have to give the school district some information to know if it's, is it gonna impact.
But if the school district knew how to respond to West Rock and some of these prior applications, they should have known how to respond to as well. That doesn't matter. It's still the, the obligation of the superintendent to respond if they believe that there's gonna be an impact. It's not our job to respond for them.
No.
I would think an appropriate letter reminding them of their ability.
We do.
Especially with this.
We send a letter each time.
Tell them to, but just say you have this opportunity. They don't take it. I'm fine with that.
And no, we, we send them notice.
Okay.
And, um, oh, I just lost that thought. Regarding Cascade, I know one of their school board members has been on for thirty years. So she's aware of. McCall Donley, there's a little bit of longevity there. I understand there's not a lot of longevity within that school district.
Yeah, I can know.
I mean, yeah, and it's, it's not like anything large isn't well-known. I mean, it's in the newspapers. It's, I mean, none of them are, are not known of.
So Cindy, when you send these out for response, do you tell them how they can respond?
Mm-hmm. Yep, yep. And we send them a minimum of thirty days in advance. Give them time. So it's not like, oh, by the way, we need to have your response by tomorrow.
But they know.
Oh, I know what I was gonna tell you. And, you know, when I sit down and talk with developers, I always say, you need to talk to Central District Health. You need to talk to Idaho Power. You should talk to the school district. I mean, I tell them, go talk with these people and find out what's needed. I didn't on your forelot, sorry. I didn't, I didn't talk to you about schools. Keep it light, and, but yes, I do talk to developers and, and, you know, especially, you know, the apartment complex. It's like, you need to talk to the fire department. You need to talk to the schools. How are you going to impact the school if there's gonna be a lot of students here? And they do, and they just haven't responded.
So back to the.
I do have someone that's gonna reach out to McCall next week.
Development agreements. It says that no work can be done before a DA is recorded at the Valley County Recorders. That means no dirt work, anything.
Which paragraph do you want?
Under procedure, the fifth bullet down.
No work can be done onsite until the development agreement is recorded at the Valley County's Recorders Office.
Yep, and so that is something that would be available to the public to see, to see what they were gonna have to because like, we got the development agreement for prior application, and it didn't state like the specifics. But once, let's say they got their preliminary platetho specifics would be put into it.
Yes. Oh, yeah, before they start work, after they have their CUP. A CUP would be recorded in line with the development agreement. Or the CUP could be recorded, and it could be a requirement, must enter into a development agreement with the Board of County Commissioners. And until the board has signed off on that, or the Board of County Commissioners, they can't start work onsite. Any work. And then that also allows the board to take a look at, at this. So they can either, you know, get it all tidied up before they even come to the P and Z, after the P and Z, but it always has to be approved by the board and recorded before they can do work. No more prep work, strip and dirt, that kind of thing before they have an agreement. Right, put it back.
I have another question on another topic. Page one. Under focus and planning, third bullet point down, sub-third circle, says the development agreement will ensure that county can enforce matters that are agreed upon in the approval process and previously only memorialized in CCNRs. For example, a fire mitigation plan, fire inc. maintenance. So where does the enforcement stop on CCNRs? Just do those two things, or does it?
No, those are just two examples. Lighting ordinances, things like that. I mean, maintenance of a parking lot. Anything that's, that these developers are covering in the CCNRs, things that they've agreed to?
Let's talk vacation rentals, short-term rentals. Can we enforce that?
Nope. Short-term rentals is to be treated like a single-family residence.
But if it's listed in the CCNRs, is that, is this statement here give us the authority to go after that?
If it's in the development agreement, if it's put in the development agreement, then I believe the county could withhold that short-term rental app permit. Of course, we'll have to consult with legal counsel, but yes.
I think that would be, I, because I, I think we've wrestled with that scenario. We've had about what we can and can't do. But when I read this, it sounds to me like the CCNRs are an extension, per se, of the ordinance to enforce.
I, yes, it's memorializing the things in the ordinance and what we, they agreed to in order for you to approve it. Like if they said there won't be any short-term rentals, so there aren't going to be all of these impacts, then this would allow us to put it in the development agreement and enforce it. We can enforce things in the development agreement.
I would, I think it would be good to see if that enforcement action runs afoul with the short-term rental law. About local governments prohibiting.
Well, you can in CCNRs. Now, that, that, that's what's so interesting, and there's new legislation that I've seen, changes to what's existing out there that is a lot more in favor of short-term rentals.
More in favor.
Yes, it limits permit fees to fifty dollars. It can't be reviewed, approved by a fire department. You can't, there's a whole list of things that you cannot do.
And are we weighing in?
I'm sure we will.
That's a Board of County Commissioners weigh-in?
And, yeah, and I'll do it through the AP eight.
So if they say in their CUP that no short-term rentals are allowed, is it, is that the cleanest way to do it?
Then I think we could put it in the development agreement.
Right, so you, you see what I'm saying, that we can.
If it's in the CCNR.
No, if it's in the CUP agreement, then it's almost cleaner than being in the CCNRs.
What do you mean, this CUP?
Well, we've had some CUPs where we asked if short-term rentals would be allowed, and they would say no. And so that was a, that was a condition of approval.
Multiple residences. And then we could do it, we would do a development agreement with them and put that in the development agreement, which we could enforce, yes.
So maybe the language should say something to the effect that they would agree to a condition of approval where their CCNRs prohibit short-term rentals. And they also address it in a development agreement, so it has some teeth.
I think if they're, if part of their presentation is they're not gonna have short-term rentals, it should be in the development agreement, because that was a basis of your decision.
That's a good point. We should put that in our verbiage as a condition of approval.
Right, but I, there is a state law that may collide with that.
Right, but that's where, that's when Oki's gonna come and say, well, you guys can't do that, but we can.
Well, it, it can be worked into a development agreement. I think that's the safer way to do it.
It's tested.
Right. Well, everything's tested.
Yeah.
Everything's ripe for testing these days. It just, that's why our whole, that's why a lot of the things I do is to create a really good record, because if we go to court, we need a good record.
So are there a series of these development agreements? One with the county, and then one perhaps with the hospital, one with the fire department, or would they all be under one?
They would all be under one.
Do the hospitals get notified?
Yep.
Do they ever respond?
Tom did once on the vacation of a road. That's Cascade Medical Center. They want patients too.
Do you still have a copy of the issues list that we generated for West Rock? Remember all our issues?
Uh, probably somewhere in the, the archives.
It was a, a process that we went through, because it was a big application.
Over two thousand units.
And so we, it was a year and a half process. We basically developed a complete checklist of, you know, each, whether it had fish and game on it, the road departments, health and welfare, and the schools. I mean, there was everything on there. And little by little, we just marched through those and heard from, I think that's to your point here. We heard from those entities about the impact and possible effects that it would have. Some of them were, you know, no effect, others had significant.
When was it at West Rock?
The application was split in nineteen ninety-eight. That time then is very different than today's time with internet and social media. And we've had teachers come in and testify as a homeowner, not as a, as a teacher. I find it hard that a lot of these main fish, fish and wildlife, the hospitals, everyone, even if they weren't notified, which I believe staff does a really good job at notifying them, that they wouldn't know about it in today's world.
I think we were, we noticed it because of the magnitude of the deal we had and seemed to be able to.
Right.
Typically now, the development agreement is between the commissioners and the developer. Okay, this deals with money and all that.
Right, contractual.
The DA, our contract between the county and the developer. Where is our input as P and Z if we're not in that discussion in the development agreement with commissioners? How do we get our voice heard? Conditions of approval?
Conditions of approval.
So we see a problem, we can't solve it, but we can put in conditions of approval that they do.
Yeah, we believe that schools should be addressed in the development agreement. We recommend, because, you know, that would be for like a PUD or it would be a recommendation, typically a subdivision. I'm trying to think of an example where you would do something on just a, a regular subdivision, besides a road.
You could, you could have the development agreement address constructing a pathway through a part of subdivision. And that exit number of dollars being contributed for the accident surrounding areas.
We wouldn't get into the mic work.
We could just say that we can just recommend to the board, the county commissioners, that there be some sort of mitigation.
We can make recommendations, but we cannot make decisions.
Yeah, when it comes to dollars and cents, that's not.
Or even with ultimately what's in, what ends up in it, we can make a recommendation, correct? But the Board of County Commissioners can disagree with us and say no.
Yeah, they're the final decision.
Right. Any other questions about this? So so when are, when are the, when are the commissioners taking this up again?
When I put it on the agenda. Do you want to take a little bit? And we could put it on an agenda for you to finalize your recommendation, or do you want to just proceed with it? You want to just individually comment back?
I think individual comments back, and if we decide that we need to have a meeting, have a full commission discussion, then we do.
If, okay, so if anybody disagrees with this, respond back, and we'll get it back on the P and Z commission agenda, because it needs to be a P and Z commission recommendation and not individual.
So we're, recently, we, we addressed impact fees for fire districts.
Yes.
Is, should that be excluded from this or addressed somehow?
We're, we're trying to follow the Local Land Use Planning Act here, mostly that sixty-seven, sixty-five, twelve.
Right.
The impact fees are Title eighty-two, and that would require a whole different action to take place. We would have to form a specific impact fee committee. I mean, this is what Commissioner Swain had brought up a couple of meetings ago. That, that's a whole different thing. You have to invest money and create your capital improvement plans. And that has to be an ordinance adopted by the Board of County Commissioners. I, I think that this is following the Local Land Use Planning Act. But if, if you feel like it should be impact fees instead of these individually negotiated development agreements.
I just wouldn't want to get, have a developer get hit twice for impacts for like, oh, you're gonna do a impact fee for fire departments and then turn around under this development agreement and get hit again.
Right, I can see that happening. I mean, if we did a development agreement for roads, you know, now, and then two years later, they adopt impact fees. So maybe in all of our development agreements, we put if impact fees are ever adopted, their participation at the development agreement level will be a credit to that impact fee, something like that.
I think that, I'm gonna be a little philosophical here for a moment, just making a layer as well, but when new development comes in, say there's a dirty lot subdivision, mop down a parcel. The impacts for providing services to that, that new subdivision should not be borne on the shoulders of existing taxpayers to pay for infrastructure and impacts. As far as the ongoing maintenance and operations, their new tax revenues from the improvements should cover that. But I think it is probably on our, our shoulders and the county commissioner's shoulders to prevent undue burden of new development, new impacts to be funded by existing.
And I know that each one of the county commissioners have said that themselves. Development needs to pay for development.
And so the adequacy of a development agreement enough that it doesn't.
You have to remember that there are no taxes that go for roads.
Okay, so.
Any taxes that go to sewer and water. There are no taxes, taxes go to schools, irrigation districts, that type of thing. Philosophically.
Yeah. Pick that up again, because I, I think if there are impact fees that are adequate, I think the issue goes away. Or a development agreement.
With the impact fees, the, the one thing that is harder is you don't get the impact fee until you apply for the building permit, because that's when the impact occurs. So it's hard, and it'll, it'll be interesting to watch the fire departments to see if they can accumulate enough capital to actually make any capital improvements. Enough money to make capital improvements, because they have to use it within like eight years. And if we don't get building permits, there's no money.
Because how, we talked about this at a prior meeting, what percentage of what we've approved has actually been built?
Like in the last two years.
Or even the last five, fifteen percent?
Maybe.
Right.
With the development agreement, we get the money upfront. They make improvements to the infrastructure.
Or coordinate with some sort of phasing.
Yes. All good thoughts. Gary, can you hear? Are we talking loud enough?
I wonder if there couldn't be a balance between getting some of it upfront in the development agreement and having the fire departments or whatever, that fees reduced. There's a little, if we get this money, you may not need so much over here because that, oh, you're, you're right. It's not guaranteed. They got to spend it.
And Gary, in your thought process, would you, I'm just trying to explore your thought, would you have the impact fee then paid as a building permit is pulled? So they, so they would actually get some development money upfront for the fire department? And then add, and then reduce the impact fee and then as the building permit is pulled for the residents, risk is there, the more service fee, then they would pay a, maybe a smaller impact fee to help pay for that.
Justify, because we are there in the process of getting their levies, what they can chart, there were some estimates. So let's just take the number three thousand and call fire. Well, it's a development agreement, fifteen hundred didn't pull the developer from building. And the other fifteen is in an impact fee. That seems more workable, palatable, the fire department gets money in a lump sum, do something with it and then the impact fee would pick up the rest and it's kind of shared between the developer and the person that wants to build.
I, I think that that's provided for in the ordinance, that title that we just notified.
You think it is?
Yeah, if the developer wants to prepay those, I don't recall if it was at a discount or not. But they can prepay for them. I don't think we can require them to prepay.
Unless it was part of the development agreement, I think that's what Gary's proposing.
Right. We'll have to look into that. I don't know that we can require them to prepay impact fees.
But it does make sense to have a developer pay in a development agreement for, I'll call it backbone infrastructure. Like if you've got, you need to have new sewer lines built or a new road built or water lines or, you know, the underground stuff. It does make sense to get that stuff done upfront.
And I absolutely, I think the sewer district does that. I think that they would do that because they're not going to do a will serve letter or release the sanitary restrictions unless they're able to do that.
Especially a government, like where Cascades ran by, Cascades sewers ran by the city. Absolutely. A private entity may be a little bit different. I know the, the city of Cascade, it's like they had to build before. And then we, and then you pay when the law is sold, you pay for that.
Not when it's before final plot.
Oh, you pay for the infrastructure updates.
Right.
Prior, but then you pay for the hookup at the time that the property is sold.
No, it's a time to.
No, hookup.
No.
Well, River District might have been different.
Yeah, that's, that's a little different than like North Lake. North Lake group parks. So lots are complete with sewer and water and all these have been paid.
Well, they've done different things in the past because some of those over in Westmount, they had LIDs. You'd have to pay your fourteen thousand, twenty thousand dollars when you had a building permit. Anyway.
So read it if any of you want to put it back on, let me know. If I don't hear from you before the next meeting, I'll just consider you happy with it. Otherwise, we'll get it put on the agenda and the commission can make a recommendation.
I think I'd like to, I actually do like your idea, Gary, about a kind of a blended system. I think that makes a lot of sense.
Because you know, impact fees in other areas, ten, fifteen thousand. No developer paid that kind of money up front in the form of a development. But you could pay something.
Right.
At a proportion, whatever that portion is.
Maybe the, the non-infrastructure impacts is, is that in my mind, I'm separating like sewer water, all that stuff as stuff they need to pay for upfront. But other impacts that would be covered through a development agreement, maybe they pay a smaller amount upfront and have a more of an impact fee that's paid by the building, when the building permit is pulled by the owner.
And I'll, I'll find out, I can talk to, talk to the fire department's attorney, Gregor, or Gregor. Because kind of the essence of an impact fee is you're paying for the impacts and you don't have the impact until there's a
Right.
Building permit.
And then the other thing to address in those two is the timeframe, the time value of money. The amount is agreed here and nothing happens for ten years. What happened to the price of doing stuff in the last five years?
So they might want the impact fee when the impact comes in. Let the fire departments figure that one out. Okay, moving forward with the discussion. Discussion concerning joint training with board of county commissioners. I'll turn this over to staff on their thoughts of this.
Okay, so training, there's, there's different training opportunities for P and C commissioners, board of county commissioners. I know the Idaho Planning Association is coming out with some videos, there's about ten videos that they should be publishing this spring. You know, they cover from the very basics to, you know, the essence of planning. You know, public meetings, public hearings, open meeting laws, all kinds of different trainings. Board of county commissioners have expressed an interest in, in having some trainings of their own, more Valley County centric. And, you know, on open meetings, conflict of interest, expertise, and then we could, I mean, Oki has has addressed this planning and zoning commission before, he's written another memo, I know he's written memos in the past. So, and then compatibility rating, which is Valley County specific. Sorry. Would the planning and zoning commission like to have a joint training? Then we can just hit everybody at the same time? And if so, what would work best for the P and Z commission? Time wise? Like if we had them at three o'clock on a Monday afternoon?
If it was in the winter, probably. If it's in the summer, no. For me.
Because the board, you know, meets Mondays.
Right.
I think a Monday afternoon while they're here makes sense.
Especially. And if we could coordinate it to have a work session like maybe Tuesday so that, you know, we have a Monday, Tuesday meeting.
Oh, yeah.
Especially for us that travel.
So we could have like the, the training that Monday at three and then have our work session the following Tuesday. I think that would work. And then everybody is on the same page.
Prior to May, please.
Yes, well, we'll get it set up as soon as possible. The board's not meeting next Monday, they're all going to be down in Boise training.
Do we need to give you our no dates?
So is that later on in the gym?
Oh, yeah, so set those work session dates and then we'll give you.
And then I'll get you on the Monday before that if possible.
Great.
Unless you want to go through some of that stuff now, I mean, we could go through the compatibility rating. But I think if we just all go through it together with the board.
I think doing it all at once would be great.
And then the board will know what your guys' thoughts are and.
At some point in time, I'd like to have a discussion about the compatibility. I, I understand what we currently have. I mean, it is strictly a Valley County document. I think there's some areas I'd like to address about compatibility. Proximity and tolerance to other land uses. I don't, I don't want to do it tonight necessarily.
No, and we, we've had that discussion. And I do see those numbers changing in the matrix. But first, we need to get to that comprehensive plan amendment. Everything should come off of that comprehensive plan amendment and where we're going with our land use. Are we going to do zoning? Are we going to do overlays? I mean, everything should filter right off of that. I mean, our ordinances need to follow that comprehensive plan. So I don't want to just go in and piecemeal changing matrix numbers until it's in in the right flow with the comprehensive plan adoption. I think that's how it's supposed to work, comprehensive plan, then ordinances.
Because if we do, for instance, if we end up deciding that we want to do some overlays, we may need to add some criteria sections. Like a commercial overlay. And say, well, how is that compatible with, you know, RV parks and single bed residences?
Or an industrial overlay, right?
I agree that it all needs to be based on that.
Oh, that will incentivize us to get those count plan changes dead. But in the meantime, we have to use the ordinance that we currently have.
Unless there's something specific you want to address.
Or change, we'd have to go through the revisions. And everybody knows, open meeting laws, I mean, that's why we had to wait till five. Oki can get more into that, conflicts of interest, we've had lots of discussion about that. Financial interest, second singularity. And then expertise contact and, you know, getting it clearly on the record, I mean, because you'll always, you know, be approached out in grocery stores or wherever and say, you know, I talked to Joe. This is, on this day, this is what was said. I shut them down. I hung up the phone, you know. Just for that record, because everything is getting so litigious anymore. I mean, we have a new group that, you know, challenges just about everything we do. And we need to have a really good record. I think probably one of the most important things is expertise contact within the commission. You know, we have to really watch ourselves so we don't talk outside of the meetings and discuss these items outside of the meetings. I've caught myself doing it before and, oh, I shouldn't do this. I think that's really important to make sure that we have a good record and that we're not biased in any way leading up to them. Okay, number four, agricultural land and open space preservation. So how do we, you know, there's a lot of discussion about how are we going to preserve agricultural land and open space? Are we going to keep those agricultural uses? Grow, I mean, how are we going to preserve ag lands, you know, for the future, for our grandkids, that type of thing? You know? Well, you have to have a reason.
You can't just deny these applications, especially, especially when the farmer has, or rancher has decided to sell. You're telling me that if we decided to sell our ranch, that you would deny our application and take away our private property rights of being able to sell that property? You can't.
No, I'm not saying that. To give you an example, you wanted to put another city the size of Cascade on the north end of your land, you might have a problem with that. The way you did it, where you joined in the city of Cascade, that's all within the state statutes and it's all allowable. When you take some of these developments right in the heart of agricultural land and plop them down, they're not compatible. It doesn't pass a smell test with me. So I'm very sensitive, you know, I'm property rights oriented. But you also have to look at, how is this county going to grow? Is it going to be all this spot stuff everywhere? Are the cities that's intended in our current plan going to expand and grow? You're tangible to the city, which makes it pretty easy.
I used me as an example, I don't want to use it specifically, but you cannot tell a farmer, a rancher, especially when sometimes selling their property, selling part of their property means that that ag lands, the really productive parts of it are actually going to survive.
And I've always been the advocate not zoning. Because when you zone, you take that property rights away from the rancher. Guess what, you're going to be our view as we drive by, if somebody over here, I'm going to let them have industrial. That has been.
But that's across the board, whether it's ag land, whether it's industrial land, whether it's commercial land, or whether it's residential. Zoning takes away the rights. Right now, we're talking about agricultural land and I think we need to be really careful that if, that if a farmer sells in full well knowing it's going to be developed, sure, we may come up with a negative compatibility, but we can't deny it just because it was agricultural ground. We can maybe deny it because the impacts to the neighbors are not mitigated. But because it was ag, ag ground, doesn't mean we can just say no.
No, and I'm not saying that. So I think it's one of the factors.
And I'm a rancher here who wants to see ag ground. So, I mean, I think that gives me a pretty unique perspective on this. But ranchers that want, ranchers and farmers that want to keep their ground, that is their productive money-making ground are going to.
And I'd dig an ag ground and put subdivisions on it.
Right.
So, but I guess I was a little bit, a little cute when I said deny it.
So have we.
But it's a balance and I don't know where that balance is.
Right.
Between the rights of that owner, which to me take paramount over maybe something that's in the ordinance. I agree with that.
Yep.
But it is a concern, but I'm not saying restrict it. And that's what zoning is.
Right. I agree, a hundred percent.
So I might be a little bit blamed for this because I asked Sin to actually put this on our agenda.
It's your fault.
It is.
This is the basis of our entire comprehensive plan amendment.
It is. And so also being a landowner as well and agreeing with both of you on your perspectives about private property rights and values and whatnot. I, I think what is missing in our discussion is the tools that we may or may not know about that can be used for landowners to let, let's say that they wanted to, to make a sale or they wanted to see the dollar size. There's development right, I think Sin has got a few code sections, things that are currently legal. But it's not a new art deal we're facing. Hundreds and hundreds of communities across the world that have dealt with urban sprawl and consuming agricultural land. You see the most productive, some of the most productive ag ground in the world, right here in the Treasure Valley, is being covered up by tens of thousands of acres for a few years. And that's, and that's one of the reasons that I actually agreed to be on planning zoning is because I have a passion for what we're leaving our generations that come behind us. And I think when people come here, I don't know that there's anybody that wants to see. And I think when people come here, I don't know that there's anybody that wants to see from one side of East Mountain to West Mountain, solid houses. I don't think anybody wants to see that. Maybe one exception here or there. But, so what I'm trying to figure out is a way or a tool that may or may not be in the code book right now is a way for landowners to realize the appreciated value of their land, sell the development rights off, put it into some sort of a conservation easement and preserve the agricultural land. You can still sell the ag land, but it's going to be at ag values. But at the same time, you've realized that development-type price. So along those lines, it seems like we should maybe have a discussion about what tools are available. And I don't know that I know what they all are today. And is there some modification of one or two of those tools that could be combined that might be a creative way that we could address that here in Valley County? And learn from other communities. I know there are a number of communities in Idaho that have dealt with this for years. Fort Lane has some impacts with ag ground up there. Lane County, frankly, has quite a bit of ag ground in it as well. Theirs is a little different. That's laid out. Anyway, I, I would like to have some research done of what different tools are currently on the books that we're not using in Valley County. Which ones are on the books? We've seen several places in this county that have been put into some sort of a conservation easement, either because of conviction of a family, and I look at the Melks family. They put an entire ranch into that on their own. They just did it. Now, there's, there's others, Nahos's have done one through the tax. They got the value on it. So those are, I'd like to have a discussion and get some research done of seeing what tools are available, which ones we're using, if we can modify something. Because I, I agree, if, if somebody comes along and offers a lot of money to somebody to sell out, they can sell. And then that person then has to get the entitlements to do the good deed too. It should be like, middle of the night, kind of, idea was, well, somebody else would own that development rights. Yeah, you could state or somebody. Sin, do you have any background on this?
I know what transferable development rights are.
Why don't you explain that first?
It's going to be a very simple explanation.
Good.
If you have a county and you, you zone it, you have to have zoning in order to transferable development rights. Because you have to give each lot a value. Each lot has a value of one housing unit, okay? And then you transfer the ability, if this is your prime ag land over here, you're going to transfer these six units over here so that there's more development rights over here, and they lose their development rights here, they've sold those development rights. They've transferred those development rights over to this area. This is a receiving area, and this is, you know, your ag preservation area. But in order to do this, my understanding is that there has to be a value that's transferred. There has to be a right that's transferred to a receiving area. And then the kicker is over here. It has to have the ability to service those development rights that were transferred over here. I mean, you would have to have sewer, you'd have to have water. If you did, you know, one unit per every acre, if you do one unit per every five acre, then you'd have better luck over here, being on septic. But you have to zone and you have to give it a value. You have to give it a right.
So with the exception of zoning, doesn't this predicate planning and zoning a little bit? We're dealing with property that's already been sold. I don't know if it's our responsibility to... I think it's, I think...
Your comp plan. That's what the comprehen, that's the planning portion of your job?
Is to educate the agricultural producers on some other options? Well, throughout the comprehensive plan, I've thought our...
Part of your job is, we're going to amend this comprehensive plan that sets it up for new ordinances.
That could allow this.
Yes.
That could allow this, I understand this. It's the educational portion that I'm struggling with as a planning and zoning commission.
You, you mean the, the education of the different tools that are available to...
To property owners.
In Idaho, it's very limited.
In Idaho, you have TDRs, transferable development rights, this is my knowledge. You can zone it. And you can buy it.
And you can also do a...
Conservation easement.
Conservation easements, but the problem with a conservation easement is, let's say landlord A has 160 acres and then a conservation easement. There are actually companies locally here.
Right, we had the Payette Lakes Land Trust come in and speak to some of these.
Right, but what I'm referring to are companies that actually do the appraisals. They'll go in and they'll value the land at its agricultural base. It's worth there. Then they'll look at the same exact piece of property and they'll value it based on the development, as the best use. That delta between those two points is the, is the, basically the tax credit that's allowed if you take that land and you put it, sell your, put it in a conservation easement. That, the way I understand this, and I'm going to put an asterisk here that I may not know all, I don't know all the details of this. This is where I think it would be good to have someone kind of talk to us about it. My understanding is that that landowner is the only person that can use that tax credit over a period of years to basically wipe out their tax liability. That's how they receive that part of that delta.
Property tax liability?
No.
Not income tax too?
It's income tax, federal and state. So you have, you have people who have a large tax liability that may owe $2 or $3 million a year in income tax. They do that because they say that they're going to have to pay tax. And that's where I think it would be good to have somebody come in and talk to us about these different tools that are available. One of the things that has been discussed...
I, I, I'm sorry, I think Craig Utter would be the one. Because he's the administrator for the Payette Land Trust.
Does he, and he may, he should know about these other things as well. But one of the things that would really work, and it was actually drafted as this legislation in Idaho, that would have allowed those development credits, those tax credits, to be transferred. And that means that they can be sold to anybody who has a tax liability. And generally, when that happens, the landowner who has this huge tax credit that can't use it all might sell it to somebody who does have a tax liability for like 90%, 95 cents on the dollar. So they're getting 95% of the value of the tax credit. And the taxpayer that they sell it to is a 5% discount on their taxes if it goes up.
So this is like carving credits for taxes?
Yes.
It is.
It sets up a marketplace.
But again, I'm struggling with how this really relates to planning and zoning. This seems like a legislative thing, or maybe a Board of County Commissioners function?
I absolutely think it starts right, right here.
But that goes to show a bias.
It's, what it is, is it's, our community, Catlin, is, is struggling with this issue.
I agree.
And, and what's lacking is we don't have probably the education to know what the tools are that are currently legal. And number two, to see if there's a way we can amend something to get it to work.
I agree on the planning side, I don't agree on the, this county has an issue that's showing a bias that's pro agricultural land and anti-development. And I'm not sure that belongs into Planning and Zoning Commission.
Because I, I, I think, I think we have, we have a responsibility to look at the different avenues to try to solve the problem. When we hear testimony of people, how do we, how do we balance that?
What about that testimony of the farmer or rancher that sold that property? Because that was what kept the rest of their ranch in business.
Give them options.
Maybe their option was only development. That's why I think as a Planning and Zoning Commission, we can, we're watching, we're walking a fine line here of being biased of pro ag and anti-development. I, I'm not saying this is a bad thing to move forward with. I think it's a, definitely a legislative and a, probably a Board of County Commissioners. I, I have a personal issue with it being in Planning and Zoning. Land planning, I agree. Through our comprehensive plan, but... How are you going to tell a...
Each one of us sitting here has some sort of a bias.
Sure.
So...
Some of us, sometimes more than others.
So we have, we have a responsibility to formulate some public policy ordinances. Yeah, they have to be approved by the county commissioners, and maybe, maybe something has to be changed legislatively. But that's how, that's how our democracy works. That's how we figure out how to change laws. And why can't the, why can't the, the idea come from the little Valley County? Why can't we come up with some sort of a solution to the issue? Because what I, what I really believe is there are, we don't have the tools that we need and we're not promoting the ones that we do have. To balance that desire from factions within our community. I think we absolutely think, you're going to have the discussion, this is exactly the form that should start in.
Which you've repeated several times. And just because I disagree and you saying that you think this is where it begins, doesn't mean that we're all going to agree with that. I'm not trying to be controversial here, but I think there's two different lines of thought here. And I think it's really easy, easy for people to view us up there as being biased. Very anti-development, sometimes, or sometimes very pro-development, for that matter. I'm, I would love to see more of these, and I think you're very well-versed in a lot of these options for these ranchers and these farmers, or even fish and wildlife, or pathways, or whatnot. Some of the options, I just don't know that it comes from us.
You know, I kind of see our duty in a little different way. And I think we're all property rights advocates. And probably the word location, location comes into view, but we're vested with letting this county grow. And we have no control, whether it goes one end of the valley or the other, we can't control it. You can't stop growth. But our comp plan gives us the ability to manage the growth. And if we follow that plan, and the speed is going to be dependent upon who wants to live here and develop here, we can't stop that. And if we follow the plans, you know, such as the one where we keep expansions over within the cities, within Valley County and the impact areas and stuff, those are controls. Some guy out somewhere that has property may not like it. But we're not taking his property right away from him. We're just following the plan that's been established here. And that's how I see we get away from bias. Because, and I try to quote Page and Verse, you know I do to the point of getting ridiculous, to say that we do have that ability, not to stop your growth, but to direct it where it needs to be, and that's why, again, I'm the advocate of the overlays. I don't think that necess, as long as you don't limit somebody, but you say, hey, this is where I want this stuff, because our approvals are showing it. Maybe that's a step forward to help developers know where they're going. But I, if it's a voluntary right of a landowner to do something with his property, and that ability exists, let him do it. But in no way have I advocated forcing someone to do something.
What about you, Commissioner Potter, you haven't said much, sorry that we, I've kind of been...
It's all good. I'm, I, I don't think it's our job to educate a property owner what they should do or what, what we think they should do with their land. Education is great, but who's responsible for it? I, I don't think planning and zoning is. I, I run into this very regularly on the, on the building side. Who's responsible for educating the consumer on their rights as a consumer and doing their due diligence on hiring a reputable builder? Well, it's, it's not my job, but it's someone's.
But it is our job.
Correct.
To, and I approve the property right, right to do it, but under our ordinances.
Correct, and our comp plan.
We do, we do have to say no sometimes.
So, okay, so here's how I'm going to frame this. Sue, Sue has some property right here. I don't know who Sue is. She lives in Boise, but she has a cornfield up here. We all know that's not true because you can't really grow corn up here, right?
Is she American or Trump?
I don't know, she might be.
Are you looking?
She decides to sell it. Some developer buys it. And then they come to planning and zoning. So now it's our job to decide what the, this cornfield, she wants to put 50 homes on it. It's our job to decide the impacts and everything. How do we step to that point before Sue sold said property to try to change this?
We don't, because she has a right to sell that property, but Burton is on the developer now that bought it.
So then why are we trying to do open space preservation?
Your job is to apply our, our standards and our ordinance.
Correct.
If that, if Sue comes in with a plot, you have to follow the ordinance.
Right.
If there's nothing in the ordinance that says you can't develop this, and because she comes in, she meets the, the one-acre requirement, she gets sanitary restrictions released on everything, she's got power, and she follows the stuff in the ordinance, I think you guys...
Otherwise, she's going to come back, Sue's going to come back and probably sue us. So I really appreciate your thoughts in getting this word out here. But how do we, how does planning and zoning get to that point before Sue sells to change this path of this agricultural ground?
Comp plan.
I don't know.
Comp plan.
Okay, but explain to me how it's in the comp plan. So do we put it in the comp plan, hey, producers, before you decide to sell this, you have to go look at everything and see what your other options are?
I would go, I would go right here to the chapter, whatever it is, the Land Use Preservation, or reading the one, goal one, retain the rural atmosphere of Valley County, da, 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 and it goes on. Probably all read it. Right in there, we could list tools that are available for people to use. We don't have, we don't have any say whether they use it or not. That's, that's not our call.
Where are you, where are you talking about?
Goal one, people, 13.
Oh, chapter 13, okay, I was just there.
Page 73. But I, I'm not saying that we are in the job or in the role of saying, oh, here's this credit, or here's this transfer of development rights, or here's this that you should use. That's, that shouldn't be our call. I agree with you on that. But I think to accomplish what our comp plan says, there needs to be some addressing or saying, here are some things to consider.
In, in hopes that these property owners will look at our comprehensive plan and... In, in hopes that these property owners will look at our comprehensive plan and-
I think, I think Sue, back to your example, that has the cornfield in Cascade, Idaho.
I wanted to make it not applicable to anyone.
Okay. Has the cornfield. Has the cornfield. If, if they looked at what their options were, and maybe the reason Sue sold it is because they needed money to care for somebody or who knows what. They wanted to liquidate their assets and move to Florida for some reason. Everybody else wants to move to Florida. Then they could say, well, I can sell it. I could do these transfer of development rights. I could do some land preservation, conservation easements, get money, whatever. What are my options? And I think that's what the public is struggling with, is they don't have the options. And we see it play out right here, right here.
Agreed.
The frustration.
Hundred percent. We see it play out. I don't know how we change that. Sure, you can put it in the comprehensive plan, but-
Nobody's gonna read it.
Property owners aren't gonna read our comprehensive plan. And I think there's other entities that need to take on this task, absolutely.
Valley Soil and Water Conservation District. This has been a conversation. They need to reach out to their peers and get those land, those agricultural land users to put their properties into conservation easements and educate them on what they can do. That's the group to educate.
For the education, I agree. I think so. But what I, what I'm trying to formulate and to move out of this P and Z Commission's hands, and it probably goes bigger, is. We don't, I don't know if we have the tools in Idaho.
In Idaho. Correct.
And, and I think the discussion should absolutely start here, saying, you know what, we're charged with all these things in our comp plan. We, we can do what we can. But we hear all this frustration. It's, it's all we got. It's all, it's all we have in Idaho. And, and maybe, maybe a conversation like this with the commissioners is the catalyst for commissioners or some entity to say, you know what, we need, we need a different tool. Or we need to modify a tool that we currently have. I don't know what all the tools are. I know the TDRs, the tax credits, but there may be others.
Zoning.
Zoning, the overlays. One of the things in the overlays, and Gary's point is, if, if you decide, this goes back to your map of the whole county. You may decide that the target area or the area that we believe is desirable to keep as open space, agricultural. I think that would be all in Planning and zoning to identify what those areas are and say, this is our goal. Now, here are some tools to try to accomplish that goal.
I worry that then that's going to be perceived as the decision of us and not the property owner. You look at a lot of this open gr-, um, open ground, open space, and it runs right up 55, right alongside 55, right? So you do an overlay. And you've talked about this a lot, where you can put an overlay in, but what about that, what about the property that borders that overlay? Are their property rights being taken?
When you add value to a property, a specific property, you're opening up a lawsuit because you're taking value away from the adjoining property. Even though they don't see it, you've enhanced one. But in doing so, you have been reduced, they're no longer equal. And that is probably something, and that is a problem, even overlays to some extent. I thought perhaps the overlays would work, because I'm looking for an idea. I'm not sold on it.
Right, right. Because we did the one, Gary, I think you were around. What did we do? We, we tried to do the Highway 55 overlay.
Well, we're doing it now by our approvals. You know, from Lake Fork to McCall, we pretty much don't have a problem with a commercial going alongside the highway. You know, we heard some testimony, people are opposed to it. It's worked, but if we could do those. Because I want the developer to open up the book when he comes and sees you and you can go, you know, this is really where they've been approving things. This is really, maybe it's kind of like a living document where you have a circumference around the city. And it could be beyond their impact area even. And as that fills in, then it goes out farther. That's the managing growth that I'm talking about, not stopping.
But does the, do the developers come and talk to you before they buy anything?
A lot of them do, a lot of them don't. They, they typically do. But I can't say absolutely, yes, you can develop that. I have people walk in every week that want to do storage units up and down Highway 55. And I have gotten to the point where I say, there's no way that's gonna get approved. But you have the right to apply.
Wasn't that the original use of the compatibility rating back in the nineties? When somebody would come into you, you might pay a fee, I forgot if I did or not, you would do a compatibility study to see if they had a chance.
I typically don't do that till a staff report. I mean, I sit down and talk to people. If they want to go through that and look at it, I'll look at anything with them.
I know I used them. Because I wanted to know, do I have a chance of getting this thing approved?
Right.
There were times you said, you'll have a ghostwriter chance. That's more than wanting something else.
So.
Some of that's buyer beware. They need to make good decisions too. If they're unsure whether something's gonna approve, they should put a clause in there that says sale contingent upon approvals.
Yeah.
And that's the due diligence, due diligence of the consumer, of the community member.
Options are done all the time when talking.
But we're, we're talking about preservation of agricultural lands in open space.
See how you do.
Without restricting.
Right.
What if you incentivize them?
And what are those incentives?
Well, maybe it's some sort of a modified TDR. It, it's, it's not into the Idaho statutes. Speaking to your point, Gary, and this is, this is the kind of the concept that I've been going around for a while. If the desire is to have development happen in areas where there's infrastructure around the city, where the stores are, where the banks are, that kind of. What if, what if there was a requirement that if you wanted to put in a hundred EDU or a-
Sessory.
Well, EDUs.
Say you wanted to do a hundred, hundred units. I don't care whether townhouses, single family, whatever they are. And let's say you did it in a city limit granted outside of our area, but still within Valley County. Or like in the impact. Maybe the, maybe that development right is, there would be a land preservation type of credit that would be required, one to one ratio. So that there's, there's that. The person who holds the billing permit is gonna pay for that impact to preserve land elsewhere. And then let's say that you have a proposed same hundred EU development out in the middle of pristine agriculture. Maybe the ratio is three to one. And so what you've done to the developers, you've said, you can develop anywhere you want. But because we are trying to maintain open space and agricultural things in our community, it's far better financially for you and for your buyers to do it near the city hub.
Aren't you taking the rights of essentially though, saying, well, it's better to buy here than buy here. So these prop-, these, this property is better than that property. And so again, you're kind of taking the right of the-
But it's not a right.
Putting the value right.
We're to develop with them.
Correct. But you're making this piece of land better than this piece of land. So you're essentially taking some sort of a property right from this guy.
Comp plan took it years ago. That's what we're meant to do.
So zoning in most counties and cities, zoning is way more aggressive than what we're talking about.
Right.
So it could be the same similar idea to be done with-
I can't hear you, Scott.
The same similar idea be done with development agreement with roads. So if they want to do a subdivision out in the food tubes. And there's a gravel county road that goes out to what we require, they're gonna be asphalt. It's not gonna pencil out because they're gonna have to pave all that to get out there.
Yeah.
And build it to a higher standard. I think the same concept. Absolutely could be a point or other. You know, it's because in, in your scenario, you're talking about maintaining and providing good roads for people to drive. If you're gonna develop out there, you got more expense to do something.
Right.
It may be sewer. If you're gonna build near a city, it's close, there's not as much impact. If you're gonna go out, you gotta build a lot more sewer lines. If you're gonna go out and build in the middle open space, it's more expensive to do something. If you build in the city, it's, it's cheaper.
Right. Typically, the land prices, the values are improportionate to what you're doing. You might have to do that road out there. Land's a lot cheaper. And that's always weighing decisions. Or land closer to an urban area is your answer.
Ken, kind of what you were describing is a tax. An open space tax.
Creativity, basically. It's like, it's like carbon trading, in a sense. You know, when a, when a company wants to develop a factory and they're required to do carbon trading, they go out to farmers or ranchers and they buy the credits and they take those credits and they- But in a sense, it would work on the same concept.
Well, you know, Ada County does it with their open space tax. Their, their levy, I mean, people pay a certain percentage and that money's taken and they buy open space.
They do, they do a blatant tax for it.
Yes, well.
It's on the tax bill.
Yeah, let's, so we need to be blatant too.
Blaine County does it. I mean, it's, you can do that by law right here in Valley County now, but I don't know that the taxpayers would support. Some would, but I think, I, I'm not sure what the reason would be.
If it was small enough, a lot of people would.
And that would have to go to vote?
Yes.
They would also vote the road in, I think.
Or the hospitals are gonna fire.
They needed money.
Because it's a town.
The advisory vote that was done for the road. Actually passed because they asked the wrong question. Right.
The unfortunate thing is this conversation's about twenty years behind. It probably should have started.
Especially in like Ada County. We had the conversations there then. I mean, we adopted this comp plan. It has all this stuff in it.
These tools.
Should have started at the state level. The state's the one that stops us. We had inclusionary zoning. We had all kinds of stuff going on. We had to give it all back. It's, I mean, you have to follow the-
That's where I struggle with the idea of implementing zoning or overlays at this point. I feel like it's too late. Now we're in a zone.
You, you look at our open space, it's gonna be hard to not have conflicts between even an overlay and what's beside it.
Right. Gravel, bent asphalt, plants, agriculture. Cindy, can you pull up the county map?
I'll wipe out High Valley. We all know what High Valley looks like. There. The what?
The road names.
You can take off the subdivisions. I can take off the-
This is going in, maybe in the Lake Fork area or somewhere. Just where it's planned out, of course. Let's. You can start to see it there, but you can see that the large concentrations and the subdivisions are, and then you see the island spaces. I think it was on the Planning and Zoning map. I took the, I put the overlays on for the federal forest land, the state land, and subdivisions. And I basically started eliminating the land that was state, federal, already subdivided and trying to see what's left. And I thought, okay, this, it's getting down to a smaller footprint. Parcels that are not virtually pasture land, ag land. And I'm thinking in my mind, going, okay, where's the next, where's the next step? It starts to eliminate. Because your blues are state. There's a lot of private land on the timber ground there with, you have development and some other. But other development now is gonna start being squeezed out into the valley. And that's, that's, the more we do that, the more it squeezes out from the cities. And what, what I'm a little concerned about is it gets to a tipping point and all of a sudden politically people say, we're done, we're gonna zone everything. And that goes against the grain. But good land management's all about is it's, I like the whole thing, it's all. Because I think it gives us a lot of flexibility. But once, once the constituency of this valley says we've had enough, and they come in and they put people in office that say, zone it, and they shut it down, then they end up with something. Is there something that we can do now as a re-emptive action that will help preserve those lands that those people want? And yet allow good development in places that make sense? I, I don't know. I don't have all the answers to this question. I asked this group. We're, we're kind of charged with land.
I think a big driver is where you can get sewer and water. I mean, that is a driver. You know, even if you zone it, okay, say we zone it and we zone something ag. You come back, you apply for a comprehensive plan amendment and a rezon. I mean, just because you zoned it ag doesn't mean it can never, you can't do anything with it. You just have to come in. And we zone it. That's what we do with our conditional use permits. Basically, except it's like a third of the process.
How many, how many acres in the, are in conservation easements?
Haven't. They have, they haven't gone over well. We could ask. I mean, I, they're, they're focusing their efforts in other counties. Isn't that what they said down at that one presentation?
Is that a state thing?
Just a tool. We can ask Craig. Utter, he runs that Bay of Land Trust. I know Nahas.
Nahas is a, there's a few other.
There's a little bit in Black Hawk. That's conflicted. There's a little bit in Black Hawk, that's conflicted. I, I think we would want to list those tools in our comp plan, under that land use section. Looking for that thing that said development should go into the impact areas, well, it's commercial and industrial, supposed to go into the impact areas. Then we need to write standards that prohibit development in the county.
It's already, to me, it's already there. State and county call it the same thing. That's where it should be. So why do we need to write another one? It's already there.
Well, it needs to be in the ordinance.
The ordinance, can it be a statute or?
You, you can't base a land use decision solely on the comprehensive plan.
A state statute.
And the state statute refers to the plan as reasons for decisions.
P and Z are two encourage.
Encourage is a lot different than shout.
Hope we are mandated with encouraging.
So by, and, and you know, that's just a, something you guys are gonna have to do, but encouraging, I mean, if you just can deny things in the county, then we need to put that in our ordinance. So people don't buy a piece of property and expect to be able to develop it. And we need to zone it, open space.
There's a lot, there's a lot into that private property rights statute. Historical uses grants based on purchases insisting that you. There's several significant cases about it. Just because somebody buys a piece of property for a development price, doesn't entitle them to, to a use that is not current in there. If a landlord has a piece of property, it has some entitlement given, but if a governing body takes away part of that right, then that becomes a taking issue. Line goes up on the rest there.
And zoning has a reverse taking. And it would be the biggest transfer of wealth from Valley County that you've ever seen up here. If you take one acre and make it industrial, it's twenty-four what that property is worth. Guy next to it's agricultural, no better per se for anybody to buy it. Those are my main ones. Maybe we could have done it. You know they would have done it like cities do usually, when they incorporate. Those plans people, they know it. Try and do it now is.
I think the overlays is a kind of halfway step.
I'm not sold on them, but I'm open to looking at that.
To me, it makes sense to have some sort of a commercial economic overlay.
We have to be visionary, we've gotta give.
No matter what, we're not gonna make everybody happy.
No, you're not. This process, while it's laborious and can get contentious at times, I haven't seen a better way of doing it yet. Yeah, I wish there was an easier way. We've got a way to do it.
So you're talking like industrial, commercial, ag overlays? And then you'd have to come up with.
I'm saying ag overlay. I'm saying this is where we would like, and maybe it's only commercial, maybe we can stretch it into residential. This is where we have approved in the past and we wouldn't mind seeing more of it and collectively put it in these areas. Why it's not always in the cities, cause they're not responsive to our growth according to our commissioners. We've taken it upon ourselves to take that corridor and make it commercial. In Seville's, when they called wholeheartedly in the nineties, they were totally gassed. But we did it, we own it, we should have been to it. Make some kind of a overlay. Not that it's guaranteed, not that it's a zone, but this is where we encourage it.
So where are you gonna encourage residential use? Would that be in like sewer districts?
Could be, it could be where it's already concentrated now. Again, not that we won't, but in our minds sometimes, and I know I do, oh boy, you crossed that creek in the middle, that's a no-go, but to stay on this side of the creek, I'll approve it. Cause in my mind, I've actually done my own overlays based on where growth is happening and what you think is too far to go.
But you need, I mean, in your mind, but your mind is different than the other four people here. And how do we relay what's in your mind to the comprehensive plan that can be shared and ed, and to educate developers? Just, just think about that.
Mine's not always the right one either.
Well, or the commission as a whole.
As a whole.
The whole, I mean, the whole land use section should be a guide, the comprehensive plan is a guide to let people know where to develop. Whether it's commercial, industrial, residential.
Well, if they read it, and I used to, I knew where I could put things in or I couldn't put things. Having said that, if they don't do their own diligence, is it now our responsibility to prevent them from making a mistake? I don't know. I don't know the answer to that.
Cindy, you mentioned about an overlay for an ag area. I think identifying ascending area, that's from the TDRs. I, I think it would be appropriate to identify an ag overlay area as long as there's a tool in place that allows the monetary gain for transferring.
Well, it could be an objective. You know, the goal is to maintain an agricultural overlay with an objective using this transferable development rate.
And maybe that's a step to get there.
Or working with, you know, those ag landowners to see who wants to put their land in an overlay. Which is a step above a full conservation easement.
If you do agricultural overlays, residential overlays and commercial.
You're zoning. Yeah, cause I mean, what happens if someone comes with a, in with a development and agricultural overlay? No, you're in an agricultural, you can't have a subdivision there. You know that that's what a P and Z commission's gonna say.
What if the ag overlays were voluntary?
Well, they might as well do the conservation easement and get the tax credits.
Yeah, if they can use them.
Well, it, it almost works like a zone because if you're in an overlay, but then you wanna remove it, then you come back and amend the comprehensive plan to remove yourself from the overlay. That works like a zone. I'm just stating words, you guys need to stop. Come on, Catlin, come on, Carrie.
Well, the overlays, it's not the end all be all, if you can come in and petition to change it. And then that would be back at, you know, at the commissioners and we would make the decision on whether or not we change that.
I have a question for the guy about this. Is there some sort of a consensus that we would have an overlay between Lake Fork and the call for a certain distance? Is that, if there is, why don't we try one and see what happens? We might all get thrown out at our job.
I think we have to go up like public comment and.
Well, yeah, we do.
Well, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, I don't, I don't know that we can say whether we want it or not without hearing from the public.
I think you can.
It's all commercial residential.
I'm willing to entertain it, but I'm not going to say it.
I think you can propose. So our whole goal, let me kinda go through this, is we need to amend our comprehensive plan so that we, you know, refresh it. You know, there's so many things in here that are so good, and there's some little things that we need to include or take out and things. What we really need to focus on is this land use portion. That's what we've been talking about the whole night. That and the open space. And that's where all the contention comes in. So I think if we go, sorry, I don't know if that gives me a. Down to that land use portion, play with me here. And this describes our multiple use concept, our future land use map, everybody has to have one of those. And we put a section in here for overlays. Because we currently have floodplain overlays, we have a Roseberry Townsite overlay, we have an airport overlay. And we form something into that overlay and describe it here, and we could show it on our maps. This is where we want commercial uses to go. I'd also like to add, if the P and Z commission will agree with this, that there perhaps should be an industrial overlay of Good Lane. Cause that's where all the gravel pits are located. There's been like seven, eight in the past. That's where the hot plants are, that's where the state has, there's the county and things like that. So ponder that one. I, I think those are the two hotspots.
Minimize some of the conflicts.
I think those are the two hotspots. And, and we just roll those different overlays into this, show it on our maps, our future land use map. And thing, I think one of the things that are objectives or, or goals, you know, for the open space and things is to work with the Valley Soil Water Conservation District, work with their peers, to get them educated on these different things. That's not our job, to go out and see who's going to, you know, enroll. Judy Anderson was gonna do that a couple of years ago. I don't know that they've had any success.
Enroll in what?
Get conserva, use, conservation easements.
I think they're not very popular today because they're, they're just not available as a tool for the vast majority of us.
You're saying you don't have huge amounts of income that you have to offset?
No, if you had, people that have millions of dollars with a tax liability every year, could certainly use it.
Well, they're milling grasshoppers for food in other states.
But I, I think it would be good to have Craig Utter.
Yeah, Craig Utter.
Come in and at least give us some education about it. To know what's the federal tax, what's the state tax, what's TDRs?
There's an ag chat group that I've sat in on many times.
If you know them, you can tell us.
I do, well, no, no, Craig can explain the conservation stuff. I've been on these ag chats, Yapvass with Department of, with University of Idaho. And Mary Huff with O'Waihe County are the ones that lead that ag chat group. And I know O'Waihe County is just zoned. They're zoned. Alan has a lot of experience from O'Waihe County. That's the tool. They're the ones that would know the tools, them and Michelle out of Latah County, they're by Moscow. I mean, I'll reach out to them again, I, I thought I was aware of all the tools we could use in Idaho.
There's a pretty good document that I read. Where they did a good job kind of summarizing.
Brittany County, too.
Yeah, look, I'll, I'll use my good.
Okay, and I'll reach out to some of our peers and say, how are you guys preserving open space at ag lands? Cause they just love to comment back. In fact, I shared with all of you the, that perspective that ag lands will preserve themselves.
Yeah.
I sent it to you, didn't I? Well.
You didn't read it. I read it.
Scar read it.
I thought it was great.
Some good perspectives. Huh?
I thought I had some good perspectives.
Yeah, it was from the planning directors.
Like in Eastern Idaho County, right?
Said, you know, farmers know what's productive and what's not productive. They know how they're going to retain that value, but, I mean, you have to read it.
Yeah, I think I do remember.
We just need more of those ELAP programs and LRP's and all of those, Ken.
Well, in, in, to be fair, in some counties in the state of Idaho are mainly agriculture. They don't, they're not experiencing this rapid growth like we are. They're not a destination resort. Many recreational, yeah, they may have spots. So their planning is a completely different concept.
Someone asked that question, Mary Huff was asking that question, cause she's trying to, and almost every planning and zoning commission had ag people on it.
Where's, where's she from?
O'Waihe County. She was at the forum down at KWP that you spoke at. Yeah, she's pretty vocal. Oh, we have fifteen minutes left. It was, well, she's a good chairman. I have, um, just wonder how long dates are gonna take. I have some things I'll do. You guys have a lot of thinking to do. Maybe read the comp plan again. You know, i- if I ever get time, I've been, I want to go refresh all these chapters that just, I mean, I have a whole box of stuff. Yeah, just little things that need to be changed, just, oh wow, that, that would be really cool in our comp plan. You know, just refreshing everything, I need to redo the census stuff. But this is where you guys really need to give us some direction.
Let's start on chapter thirteen.
I keep getting hung up on chapter one, but.
Chapter one's actually pretty good.
Most of them are. There just needs to be some changes. Yeah, the pictures are great.
So who gives your ideas of changes and what are the highlights?
Legislative type thing, yeah. When I get a chance, that's, I've been trying to get a chance for two years now. So we started this. December of 2021. Great, the review of this? These work sessions to start the review.
When Catlin started.
Yeah. October 2021 then. But then we had some zoning come up and then.
And we had some, oh, and then we were gonna rewrite our subdivision regulations. And we've had all kinds of di- different things interfere, most of it just new applications. Busy, and there's only not very many staff.
Enough time in the week, month, year.
And they roll by.
Don't we all agree that the comp plan is a good document to use?
I think it's, it's pretty good. I, I think it needs some tweaking.
Updating, tweaking.
I, I've gone through it, my notes where I live, say, yeah, that language is a little soft or maybe that's a little too harsh.
The one problem I have with it, and it's been the conversation, session I had it, that you can find whatever you want in the comp plan. And to that extent, it's true, if you don't read the whole comp plan. Cause it says we shall have growth, when you get into the, the growth area, but then you go over here and says, yeah, but that growth shall be here. I would like to see some of that maybe refer to paragraph something on this page. I would like to see some of that maybe refer to paragraph something on this page when they make such a statement. Have reference points because nobody unless a P and Z member is going to read that like we would do. So I can get direction of which way to go on this. I would like to see some of that. Yes, we want growth, but you have to adhere to this.
And that's where the ordinance comes in. That's where the standards come in. That's where this book comes in.
Okay, where, let's just take one conflict. Now the county wants growth, it's a priority. Then you get down to the preservation and those, that growth shall be in the nearest cities. What ordinance addresses that in there? It doesn't say you can't build out the county, you have to build in the city, yet it's in our comp plan, but it's not addressed in there that I was.
No, because we don't have zoning.
Well, but if we're following a comp plan, we have to follow the entire.
You have to implement the comp plan through your ordinances.
So then are you suggesting we put something there that the type of elements shall be.
And then you would have to define those different types.
And I think you, and that's where I think it.
Then you get back to zoning.
Because it doesn't, it doesn't really reflect.
I mean, if you can get services, sewer, water, roads. I mean, that's out of the bag. I mean, we have a sewer district that has taken over the middle of the county. I mean, everything in McCall is based upon that Payette Lake Sewer District. Which is, wouldn't you say?
But they have, they have no plans to expand, is that right?
They do not.
Another way around.
Exactly.
So.
But they still allow growth within the city limits though. Like if somebody wants to take down two or three single family homes on the lot and build a multi-family complex, would they resolve that?
Depends. I can't predict what they do. Spin all over the board.
But they would, they would have defined sewer capacity if it was a.
Correct.
Makes sense.
Well, they have to, and then their lines are not sized correctly around the lake. So that controls a lot of stuff. It's all based upon that sewer. I mean, the stuff inside the city is totally mis- inadequate. I mean, they've got stuff popping out of the manholes.
But their, their service area does not extend at all into our jurisdiction of the county.
No. Because the impact area goes clear up around the lake. That's what the, it was, yeah, the sewer was put in basically for that. Well, they used to have the two separate. I know that the staff at McCall was horrified when they combined it because then that allowed the sewer district to control the growth. Before it was the city of McCall controlling McCall and the Payette Lake Sewer District controlling the stuff outside.
So the standalone sewer systems are, I don't know.
YMCA. Well, Jug Mountain, Jug Mountain, West Mountain, North Lake, Cascade, Payette Lake, Warm Lake.
What about West?
That's the Black Hawk one, the one up by Black Hawk on the river. It's called West Mountain. This, this is South Lake. It's, they haven't been able to implement that one.
That might be actually an interesting maps and is get a map of their service areas.
Yeah. Okay, let's see. There's Donley. No, it's not here. There's sewer district.
A light color.
Yeah, the lavender. Well, they just described a boundary. We haven't, this, this map needs to be updated too. And that's where McCall got into the issue here because, I mean, Donley, because Donley turned over their sewer. North Lake. Then McCall. That's the sewer district. Not these partial boundaries, that kind of conflicts. Cascade, it's special. That's South Lake Sewer District. It's, there's no active sewer there. Oh, dates, sorry. I consumed the time there.
No, it's no problem.
Regular meeting is the eighth.
Yep. Second Thursday of every month, your tax will reflect that, except for Ken's. So our next work session should be the 20th. That's, oh, I can't be there the 20th, sorry.
Can't be there what?
The 20th. I knew there was a reason why that didn't work. You could postpone till the 27th.
I am out of town.
21st? 27th? I'm out that entire week. Week I go to California. It's just not the whole month this year.
It's not the whole month.
That's the coalition meeting. I mean, I would.
I could do, oh, I can't do the 13th. I have leaders council that night.
You know, we, we can meet earlier in the day if that fits everybody's thing. What time is your leadership council?
Six. We could meet at three.
Yeah.
On the 13th.
How about three on the 13th?
Yeah, I can make it.
I can do that.
Can I go look at my calendar real quick?
Yeah.
Because I've got a lot of stuff coming up.
February 13th, three o'clock.
Plus it'd be a good reminder.
Three to five work session.
Yeah.
Oh goodness.
Hope I can get in there.
Well, she's looking at that. Let's look at March. So our meeting should be the 14th. So how about the 26th?
That's in the, right in the middle of spring break.
Oh. I will on the 26th, but I won't be on the 19th. We may not just have a work session. Or you guys can do the 26th without me. Or the. Two meetings in a week? I can't do the 12th unless we do it at three.
Unless I'm not here looking to do it.
13th. I, there's a fire working group, I could probably go to that. But it's, Valley County Risk Map is the 13th and the Economic Development. Well, since then we're at three. I'm conflicting already. How about at nine o'clock on the 13th? I could do that. No, no, I'm, that's my bedtime. Nine to 11.
Or noon.
Nine, nine to noon.
On the 13th? I thought that was.
How about, may I propose something? The 12th. And you guys do your training with the board and then have your work session.
How will, how long is this training going to be?
It shouldn't be over an hour, I would not think.
Okay, that's fine with me.
But we could do it right at the end, so I could ask them if they would do the training from like three to four and then open the room to you guys from four to six.
They'll let us know.
I will let you know.
Okay, I'm going to keep, I'm, I think we should try to keep the February 13th to two hours. If we're doing two hours the day before and then two hours.
Well, if we do the 12th, then we won't have to do the 13th.
Yeah.
So let me find out about the 12th.
Okay. Yeah, that'd work well.
Two, 12.
At three.
At four.
I think two hours is long enough.
Me too.
And then the 13th would be nine to 11 if they don't, if they're busy.
Nine to 11 on what day?
The 13th.
13th.
If we can't do it on the 12th.
If we can't do it on the 12th.
Then in March, our regular meeting is on the 14th, right?
Yes. So if, for this, in preparation for the meeting on the 12th, we'll have the training for an hour. And then I will reach out to some of my cohorts and see what they do for tax preparat- I mean, ag land preservation. And then maybe invite.
I could call Ron at NOS and find out who would be somebody that could explain what they need.
I think Craig Utter is, is the guy. Um, because I think we had Jim Frog explain it before.
We did.
He's the president or something, but I think Craig could really do a good job. And then I'll reach out to like Mary and Yapvass. And maybe Michelle at Leita County.
And then we could maybe dive into chapter 13.
Yeah, think about your overlays and what you want to do.
One time I, you know those maps where we have like five different maps on the county, I'd take them over. I took a highlighter and I started marking the spaces that I hold. That potentially could be subdivision area. This could be open space. I'm zoning. But it was a good exercise to go. Because then it started getting me thinking about, well, okay, how do our ordinances line up?
Because I keep saying, you know, ordinances have to implement the comp plan. But do they right now? We've had so many changes, do they?
Do we want to schedule our March date too or not?
Goodness. March. Which day, Chairman?
The 12th.
That's this week of our meeting.
I know.
19th?
Gone. And the next week is spring break.
Uh, the 12th? I have no opposition to two meetings in the same week.
From four to six?
Four to six.
You're not going south at all?
I do, I just.
Yeah. Okay.
I'm kind of a one guy.
Actually, the 12th, I have Economic Development Council. But it's okay, this is my priority. Now. Yeah, so March 12th from four to six. I like the earlier meetings.
Me too.
That'll get us Remy and. Funny.
Did you say Rum?
Remy.
Right. March 12th, the captain morning coming up.
So it's easy. We're planning February 12th and March 12th, both from four to six PM. Even Scott can't forget.
Well, the 12th is three for the training.
Yeah.
Three?
February 12th.
Would be three, three to four.
Oh, okay. I got you. I was wondering how we were getting all the rest of it done in an hour. But I have to confirm that that's okay and then they'll leave so you guys can have your work session.
We don't come in on Tuesday.
Unless we just have a joint work session with them and you guys give them your overlay ideas.
No, I don't think we're ready for that yet.
Yeah, because you guys don't have anything formulated yet. In the meantime, we can, if I have time, we'll start making those minor changes to the rest of the comp plan. No, I don't know that even our, the opponents of things ever say our comp plan is bad. I, I haven't heard that.
Our comp plan is written for multi-use.
Which is what our county is.
And people like it.
Unless.
It's presently vague.
Something they don't want next door.
Yeah. Okay, uh, anything else?
Thank you guys. I, I thought we had.
You do.
I agree.
You know. We do live in Idaho.
Would you?
You know, we try things, they bat us back. Yeah.
Okay, we use adjourned at 7:07.